Good afternoon. It's 5 o'clock on August 16th, 2023. We have established a quorum calling this meeting to order. City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, realign the regular session or so-called executive session or order of business any time prior to adjournment. Should be noted that Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland is not here. He had some family business to attend to. We'll move to item number two, work sessions. Two A, discuss FY 2023, 2024 proposed budget and provide feedback to our city manager. I don't believe we're going to have a presentation night, nor do I think one is needed. I'm guessing that we have some things to discuss. Councilwoman Lee?
You want me to go over mine first?
Well, I think the only thing that's outstanding out on the budget that I'm aware of is the community services.
Right. So you want me to go first?
Funding and certainly.
Okay. So I went back and looked at the community services. I received what the mayor, the Excel spreadsheet that the mayor put, and I compared it to last year and what's proposed in the budget book versus what my opinions are. And the mayor's version and my version are nothing like the what's in the budget book. So I kind of want, I have some questions and then I want to go over what I think I would like to see happen and then talk about where we go from there. And I'm sorry, I'm going to kind of break these down one by one.
Let me get the mayor's draft over to Colin. The mayor's, okay, great. Thank you.
And I actually can email you what I'm looking at, Sylvia.
Yes, please, so we can pull it up.
My version. Yes.
This is my copy.
That's your copy. You're welcome. All right, I'm just going to forward you the email I sent to the mayor. So that's on its way, Sylvia. Okay, so I was a little confused as to why, where the 4,000 number came up from. I didn't, I was always told that depending on, again, what you're renting the community, the convention center for, the maximum amount is 5,000 and kind of goes down from there depending on what you're doing there. So, but I get it now from reading the mayor's spreadsheet where what he was trying to accomplish. The concern that I have in doing it this way is that not every group asked on their application for use of the convention center or an in-kind, even in part, just some of them just straight out, that's not what they needed. So I, in looking at the mayor's version, which comes out to 112, and then if you incorporate 4,000 for an in-kind use for the convention center, it brings you to his total of 130.
I need to correct. The 112 was the funding from 2023 exclusive of the, of the three that I removed.
2023, what I recall is we stayed within 120, 122 of their ask and haven't, didn't have anything to do with the in-kind.
That is correct. 2023 is just an indicator.
1,222 dollars.
Well, 1,012, 112,000 dollars plus the three that I removed.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, but that still kind of goes to my point. So the, I think before in 2022, if I'm remembering correctly, we had 130,000 or so budgeted and the committee that was formed decided we wanted to bring that down to under 125 or something like that, which is how we ended up with the 122. So if we do the mayor's version, we're actually reducing the amount I feel like that we're giving to organizations because the, they're still, they're wanting their money. They're still wanting the money that they asked for outside of the in-kind. So when, what we're actually still doing here, by doing it this way, we'd be reducing the amount of money that they're asking to receive and adding on the cost for the convention center, which some of them didn't even ask for, but it's reducing the amount of their ask, one. And then, two, I also kind of think on the flip side of it, why are we adding money into the budget for our community partners when, again, they're not asking for it? That money, when we can isolate the groups that did ask for it and keep the, their initial ask at what it was to keep us at the 122 from last year? So the only groups, and looking at their, I went through the whole notebook of ask, the only groups that asked for use of the convention center were the Long-Term Recovery Team, the Family Crisis Center, the Children's Advocacy Center, and the Bastrop Emergency Food Pantry. None of the other organizations on the application.
Colin, can you pull up Councilmember Lee's info? I sent it to your email. There you go. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, that's so small. But none of the other groups on the, on their specific application said, we would like use of the convention center outside of these groups. The Pregnancy Resource Center did mention it on their application. However, I didn't highlight them in green, and I'll explain why for that in a little bit. So that's my thought on that. And I talked to several organizations today, and they were of the same frame of mind. We, yes, we would like use of the convention center, but not to take away from what our ask is in terms of what we need for our organization. So Austin Habitat for Humanity, I'm fine with, with no dollars there. Bastrop Cats Anonymous, fine with no dollars there. Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry, I would like to see them get that little 685, and here's why. When you're looking at buying, or when that organization is looking at buying food or obtaining food from their partner organizations, including the Austin Central Texas Food Bank, they're having to pay for that food. And my understanding is the food bank is having a hard time supplying their partners with food. So the food pantry is actually having to buy the food direct. And they're getting 50%, so they're getting 50% less of what they would normally get from the Central Texas Food Bank, and they're having to pay $8,000 for four pallets of food to try to stock the food pantry. They also manage the city's Good Neighbor Fund. They, they screen all the applicants, I think, and they don't receive any funding to manage that portion for the city. That's something they're actually doing on behalf of the city. So I think to ask 33,685, give them the extra 685, I did have a question about why their proposed in-kind was 5,650. Is that what they pay for their event every year?
Now, ma'am, that would be the cost if they paid.
Come up.
Yes. Excuse me. That would be the cost if they had paid for it. They have gotten it comped every year, or in-kind every year.
Oh, okay.
And the reason why that's such a large amount, that event is for like 650 people, so it's the number of people, the tables, chairs, everything that's set up, that's one of the largest ones we have next to the Sportsman's Banquet.
Thank you. And I'm glad you said that because I was wondering on some of these others, like how much would their event actually cost if they had to pay for it and it wasn't, it wasn't specified on, I mean, the women's, the Family Crisis Center, theirs is 2275, so that's what they would have paid.
Yes, ma'am.
For their event.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's comped, right? And then the Pregnancy Resource Center, same thing, 2820. So those are the amounts that they paid for their event, or they would have paid, I'm sorry, for their event.
Right, right, yes, ma'am.
Now, the Pregnancy Resource Center, though, is, are they comped or is it a discount?
I'll have to go back and look because some are, some are in-kind and then some pay, like Feed the Need pays.
I don't have them as comped. On the list that I received or a copy that I had gotten.
Then they, then they would have paid.
Then that would have been the full amount that they paid.
Yes, ma'am.
But I don't have them comped. On here, I have the Family Crisis Center and the Food Pantry. Out of the applications we received, the groups that are being comped are Family Crisis Center and the Food Pantry. And then the discounted events out of the applications we received for this purpose is the Child Advocacy Center, and that's it. And Feed the Need currently comped. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So much. I might need you more, but thank you. So the Bastrop County First Responders, so that's where I am with Food Pantry. I'd like to see them get the full 33,685 because that, there is a need, it's only 685 dollars. And that 685 dollars goes a long way.
Can I correct you on something real quick? The Bastrop First Responders, their ask for this year is 11,905, not the 17,500.
Well, I have a question about that. So, and I might have read it wrong. Because on their application, it says 17. On, on, on our budget book, it says 11, but their application says 17.
His presentation had 11 also.
Correct.
Their application says 17. So how do we know which they, and when he spoke, if I'm remembering correctly, he said 17. Their application says 17. You good?
You're good.
And that that was specific to the fact that they needed to purchase those devices. So I guess then we need to really clarify is it the 17 or is it the 11? Because you did say yesterday there was a cushion, but then when I looked at the application, I was like, well, there's no cushion, and this is dollars that they actually need to purchase that equipment, so it's really not a cushion that I would want to take away from.
It says funded last year.
Sorry?
It says funded last year, 75.
Correct.
Funding request is 11,905.
Okay, so I'm reading it wrong. Where on the application does it say 11?
Mary, can I?
Okay, got it. I'm reading it wrong. Thank you. Okay. So then we put, then that's where the cushion comes in. Okay, good. So we do have a cushion there. Let me add that, track that on 7,500 minus 11,905. So we have a cushion of 5,000, 5,595. Okay. All right, good. Thank you. So then, Long-Term Recovery, they're getting the 10,000 they asked for. Same thing, proposed in-kind. And on here, so 4,000 is what they would pay for their event? Kathy? Long-Term Recovery Team, 4,000 is what they would pay for their event?
If that is what their event called for, if it hadn't grown any, hadn't, if they didn't take anything away, very seldom is an event exactly 4,000 dollars, so.
That's why I was trying to figure out where the 4,000 number came from.
And I don't know if we just averaged those, city manager?
Those are, those are my numbers.
Okay.
The 4,000 was my number. It was, it was just based on an average cost of doing that. And let me, let me kind of interject something here real quick so you understand my, the reasoning for that is regardless of whether we comp it, regardless of what discount we give, we still, the city still incurs costs for operating that. And I was looking more at the operational cost that the city is giving to these organizations in in-kind services.
I understand. I understand that. My thing is not all of them asked for it, so I don't think we should include it for all of the groups, just the ones that specifically asked for it on their application. And now that you said they came to the microphone and you asked them if they might need it, but what might they need it for if they haven't used it in the past? And if we're looking at, if we're going to base what we're giving these groups on what they're asking for, it should be on their application. And if they, right?
Fair enough. Mine was just a draft.
So, so the 4,000 is, we're just using that as a figure. Thank you. Probably don't have to get up anymore for now.
No, it's okay. That's fine.
So Family Crisis, I'm good with them. I'm good with the 10,000. They asked for 12. I will let you know that I've spoken with, with that group, and they, they are in need of the 12, but I'm, I'm, I'm good with giving them what they got last year. Pregnancy Resource Center, I'm good with giving them what they got last year. The in-kind, their ask was for full comp. I, I see that group, their, their event, as they explained, is a fundraiser, and I really have an issue, I comp, giving full comp for a fundraiser, because again, you're raising 300, that's, this is the number I'm throwing out, not a number they gave, but if you're raising, you're doing your fundraiser at the convention center and you raised $300,000 and we're comping you the cost of the venue, but you just raised $300,000, I just kind of have a problem with that. I do see comps, they're, they're going to get a discount because they're a nonprofit, a local nonprofit at that, they would get the 25% off, or 25% discount anyway. I have a problem with full comp for fundraisers. If it's an educational event, a training event, an awareness event, yes. If they're, if it's a banquet to raise money for their organization, I personally have a problem with that, and they're getting the 15% discount. So fine with proposed funding, I'm not happy with the full comp. Child Advocacy Center, I know that the city manager is negotiating that with them. They did put on their application that they would like to start receiving an in-kind donation for the convention center. They requested 15,000, the proposal was 9. I guess I, after I started thinking about it, and I didn't speak with them today, but city manager, I know that when I initially talked to them, there were some fees associated with use of the park for their Spring Fest, I think, that they wanted to discuss as well. So if they are asking for just the use of the convention center, what's, what are we negotiating with them?
So the discussion with the Children's Advocacy Center was they were going to bring trainees from around the area, in which case, if they're going to put a head in a bed, that's more a hot fund expense. And, and so it's just a different pot of money.
Got you.
And for me, when I changed your math and I changed the Bastrop First Responders, if you change that to 11,905, then you have a bottom line of 117,090.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So you're still less than the 122. I mean, you still have about $7,000 to work with. My, my preference is that we understand everybody that's going to be comped, because as the mayor stated, we do have an overhead expense. Now, it's wear and tear. The convention center has a different fund. If I know everybody who's going to be comped or discounted and I have an idea, I can make sure to adjust her budget accordingly from a different pot of money that won't strike the general fund.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that because that cuts out, that'll cut me out from, let me make sure I'm not missing anything. Costa, I'm good. Feed the Need, In the Streets, Pines, Pines Prairie and Trust. So I would ask for reconsideration on that organization, not much. They had mentioned that they were trying to fix a bridge, and then they also, in their in-kind, asked for help from the city to repair some damages that they had. I don't know if that included material costs, I can't remember, but they wanted some help from city employees.
Where's the bridge?
I don't know. Actually, I'm meeting with them this evening for her to show me that. So, and the reason why I think maybe we should reconsider is the Colorado Refuge, if I'm remembering correctly, was part of our parks plan. It was listed as a potential park land or, or part of our park services for our community or whatever. If I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, I remember seeing Colorado Refuge on there. So if we're considering an attraction to bring people into the city, maybe we want to help them out a little bit. I have another organization that, that I spoke about that could come and help do some cleaning for them for free, that I'm going to try to connect them with this evening when I meet with them, but didn't know if maybe council wanted to maybe consider either giving them 2,000 to help with repair of that bridge and then in-kind employee use? I don't know. Just the reconsideration.
So, so what, and not that I don't believe that the work that they do is good, but what gives me a little bit of heartburn is this is a conservation trust, meaning they're working with property owners, but the property owners continue to still own that property. And we have a specific restriction on not doing improvements on private property.
Got you.
That's the only thing that gives me heartburn. I like that they're, they have a long-term land bank, but the name trust, that's where we're going to run into, we're going to run into some problemos.
Okay, thank you.
Problemas, yes.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Meyer has had her light on.
Thank you, mayor. Just a question of clarity, two questions, one statement, one question. Is the points that you're making, Cheryl, if they're getting in-kind for the convention center, they should, the groups that don't ask for that should get more because they're not asking it? Well, I mean, but adjusting the number seems like that would be because if we're not, and I'm not saying you are, I'm just asking because it seems like the points that, the ones that haven't asked for in-kind, and then you said maybe some or one or two needed, we needed to adjust for more, was the reasoning because they weren't asking for in-kind?
They're not asking for in-kind, so they're just going to get what they asked for in their, their ask. There's no adjustment there. They, for instance, the Pregnancy Resource Center, they asked for 15,650. We proposed, the proposed amount is 7,500, recommended 7,500 on mine and the mayor's sheet. They, they get a 15% discount because they're a nonprofit if they use the convention center. So I'll make sure my light is on. So no, there's no adjustment. They're not getting more. The other groups, the four that have consistently asked for use of the convention center, and on the current application specifically asked for convention center were Long-Term Recovery Team, Family Crisis, Child Advocacy Center, and Emergency Food Pantry. So they would get their ask, and then whatever the cost is for use of the convention center for their specific event would be comped. So they're getting more because they're getting this free, if you will. They're not really getting more money, they're just getting use of the convention center free, and then we pay it on the back end, right? But, but those also are the groups that, to me, provide the most wide amount of service in the community, education, training, all of those, those groups. You could even throw Costa in there if you wanted to, but for, the, the four that specifically asked for it provide more of a service to our community than the other groups, which would warrant them being comped if we so choose.
I hear you on that. And my other statement, just when we talk about getting into the functions of the convention center for the different groups, I don't think we need to take a deep dive. If they're having a volunteer to raise money, they're nonprofits, so why would we penalize? I just think we don't need to deep dive into the reasoning. If they get this, they get this, or they get whatever, but we're going to get into the deep weeds of things, and then are we going to be the judge of like, okay, well, you're going to get that because we agree? I just think we need to say, this is in-kind, this is what you get, or you don't get, whatever. But I just don't want to get so involved in their functionings of why they're using the center.
I could agree with that. I think mine is just more of, I'm not trying to deep dive into it per se. If it's a fundraiser, if it's a fundraiser for the organization, you get the discount. If, if you're providing a service to the community, that's to me where the deep dive would be. How do we define what's a service to the community? Because the Pregnancy Resource Center could easily come back and say, well, we're, we're, our event is educational, but it's also a fundraiser. So that, I get what you're saying, and that's something that we could maybe figure out for next year.
Yeah.
Is how we're going to determine who gets comped and who doesn't, which is what the city manager.
And on that point, I'm agree with you 100% because this is confusing.
Yeah.
So I think maybe if we can have a better system next year when we do the budget to make this a little simpler and easier to understand on the comping, and that it would really improve how we do this, so.
Right. I agree. And I think the mayor's on point in starting that process with, I mean, at one time, they were saying $5 per person, which is not doable, it's not going to help these organizations. But the mayor's saying that he did the research, and it's, he looked at other cities, it's coming out to 11,12 per person, which would also, because then my question was, well, then how are you going to determine that for next year? Because cost is going to be higher, well, then our population is probably going to be higher, so, but still, do we leave it at $12 per person or do we increase it? So that is stuff then we would have to work out, like you said, Cynthia, for next year. But I think we're going down the right path to be able to do that, as well as the city manager and I have talked about, the application itself is a little outdated and needs to be revamped so that it kind of forces the organizations to give us a little bit more information about what they're going to use the monies for. But I think for this year, I, I would like to take out the 4,000 for everyone because not everyone asked for use of the convention center, and I know that we're just throwing that number out there. We really don't even know the exact amount to, how do we budget something and we really don't know what the exact amount is?
I would take the estimate. So for example, each one of these, 4,000, other than the Emergency Food Pantry, because we know that's a large one, and then all of the comped events, and I would adjust Kathy's budget accordingly, because I still have to cover the lights and everything else in the budget. But your new total in that column is 117,090. We've corrected it, it's on the screen for the public to see as well. That takes it down to $9.76 a person based on a population of 12,000 people.
So, and that takes our Food Pantry back to the 33,685?
Uh, no, let me see. 33,685 takes us to, uh, yes, it's, it's 117,090, and it is $9.76 cents a person.
I'm sorry, so it does, that is the 117,900?
090.
With the Food Pantry. So then, that's $9 you said?
$9.76 a person.
So we have some wiggle room here. I, I, I initially had the, I think Child Advocacy Center at 10,000. Like when I first put it all together, I lowered my numbers trying to stay at the 122. But now that we have some room to play with, I can give my, my point of view on this, is take that Child Advocacy Center, if you will, so we get to 10,000.
While you're doing, while you're doing the figuring, Councilmember Crouch has his light on. Councilmember Crouch?
To get all situated here. I, I was just going to say that if we dive into the pennies on this piece, we're going to be here all night. And if we dive into which group needs more money than the other group, or which one's more deserving than the other group, one, the Bastrop Cats are going to say that they're as important as the other groups, and I'm not here to say that they are or aren't, or if we're going to fund them or not fund them. But I think that what, what Mayor Nelson did as far as putting a dollar amount per person on here is a great way to come up with the dollar amount, the total dollar amount. And then if you just go by the dollar amounts that they ask for, we're, we're coming real close to hitting all of those numbers. If we take the in-kind piece off, you can leave the $4,000 for the four groups that specifically asked for the convention center, take the other $4,000 off that are left. other four thousand dollars off that are listed on every one of those items and just put that back into the pot for, uh, different organizations to get, maybe to get closer to the ask that they had.
Right. That's what I was trying to do.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to do.
So, if we, if we do that, um, I, and I think that also the, um, the trust, which one was the trust?
Prairie land, pines and prairie trust.
That's, that's the one that, it's out of the city limits, correct?
But it was on our, our.
I, I get it, but it's still, it's still out of the city limits. So, how many, you gotta look at how many of the citizens that are paying taxes on it are using that facility or not.
Right.
Um, and so if you, if you look at it from that perspective, there's somebody that lives in the city limits that never uses that thing, are they, are they gonna be on board with paying for that even though it's not a big ask? And, and maybe there's more people that use it than I think that use it. I know I've used it. Um, but I, it, it's out of the city limits and I think that was one of the points that, uh, was made by, by not funding that. So, I, I was just gonna mention that I, I don't know that we need to get into the weeds on all these things. We can't get in, it, this is a problem every year that I've seen it, um, when they start saying who's gonna get what. You start off with the ask and then, um, kinda go by what they're asking for and how much we can spend. And if we, determined we can spend eleven dollars and fifty cents per person, great. Let's do that. And if not everybody's asking for in-kind stuff, let's move that money back into the pot to distribute out amongst everybody else. It's just a thought.
No, I, I agree. And that, that's what I think we're trying to do now. So, I, I, I had Family Crisis initially at twelve thousand was my recommendation. That was their full ask. Um, the Child Advocacy Center, Sylvia, if you can bump that up to ten, see where we are.
That takes you to one twenty zero nine zero.
Um, the combined, uh, Community Action, can you bump that to ten and see where we are?
One twenty-two zero nine zero.
And then if we bump, um, Pregnancy Resource Center up five hundred, where are we at?
One twenty-two, five ninety.
And that takes us to how much per person?
Ten dollars and twenty-two cents.
Anybody else?
Councilmember Meyer?
So, I have a problem picking and choosing. I really do. I, 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 it looks, I don't like that appearance and I'm certainly not saying that's what we're doing, but the method that we're using right now is giving the perception that's what we're doing. So, I want a formula, like Jimmy said, I want a formula, um, of how we're gonna do this and we put the extra in. We haven't finalized the budget, but I don't wanna pick and choose and say these numbers. That, that just doesn't seem fair to me to do it that way.
I, I agree, but unfortunately, we don't have anything in place and we need to approve a budget. But I, I agree and I do, I, I, I made your same comment last year, um, when this came up. And unfortunately, we didn't put anything in place between last year and this year. And the bump that I'm doing is actually getting these groups to where their, what their ask is. So, that, all of the, the four that I just named, it got, uh, Family Crisis to their ask. It got the Child Advocacy Center closer to their ask. It got the Pregnancy Resource Center more than they got last year and closer to their ask. Um, and then the Combined Community Action, it gets them at their ask. So, I'm trying to get them to their ask and just making sure that we're still within the parameters of how much the mayor is proposing per person.
I hear ya.
Eleven, right?
And may I ask Sylvia? Sylvia, what do you recommend? How do we do this?
So, if you do eleven sixty-nine, which is the one forty, they're still about eighteen thousand dollars or so. I think almost everybody is near or at their ask with the exception of In the Streets, Hands Up High Ministry. They asked for fifteen. The recommendation was eight. Other than that, everybody else is very, very close or at their ask with the exception of, uh, the Pregnancy Resource Center. So, with the divvying that she's done with a couple thousand, a couple thousand, if, um, you put In the Streets, Hands Up High Ministry, who we use repeatedly as part of our, um, as part of our PD item, if, uh, ideally, the ask and what we gave, if we have any money to give, let's start at fifty percent back, fifty percent of that difference. So, for example, In the Streets asked for fifteen. The proposal was eight. If we have money to give back, the difference of the half of seventy, half of seven thousand is thirty-five hundred. Let's start with putting fifty percent back of everybody. And let's, that is a fair and equal formula.
I agree. That's fair.
So, let me, let me run that math really quickly.
Councilmember Plunkett, is, is light on? He may be able to add a little light to this?
Well, um, hopefully. Uh, one thing, and, uh, we do have a population difference here, which is gonna cause some problems in our per, in our per capita spending. It looks like in, uh, Councilmember Lee's, uh, spreadsheet, we've got a twelve thousand population, twelve thousand dollar population, I was forgetting. Uh, and, and, um, Mayor Nelson's spreadsheet, we have eleven-three. I think we need to first at least agree on the population.
It's eleven-three.
Okay.
I, I put the twelve in because I wasn't sure what the number was.
Oh, but you used that.
And then I found that, I found where his thing was and I don't think that I ever went back and changed it. I might've went back and changed it in the formula. I don't think I did though.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, city manager, if you would check the calculation on the, in the cell and make sure we're at eleven-three instead of twelve K.
Yeah. I can't remember if I went back and changed it or not.
So, total of the original ask requested in FY twenty-four is one seventy-eight, three, thirty-five. And with the population of eleven-three hundred, that takes it to fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents a person. Mayor Nelson's, uh, calculation has the, let's see. There you go. Population eleven-three hundred.
I believe it came right at, uh, one hundred and thirty K.
Yeah. I caught one twenty-nine, nine fifty.
Yeah.
So, if we do the, um, if you go to Mayor Nelson's spreadsheet, uh, column, so if you go to Mayor Nelson's spreadsheet, at the bottom where it says, uh, twelve thou, a hundred and twelve thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Where did you? Nope, not that one. So, sorry. FY twenty-four projected cash award, ninety-four thousand dollars. If you divide that by eleven thousand, three hundred, you get eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
Per person.
Eight dollars and thirty-two cents per person.
But if you add the in-kind, if you add the in-kind amount to that, uh, it brings it up to a hundred and thirty thousand. A hundred and thirty thousand then would be eleven fifty, approximately eleven fifty per capita.
Yes. Eleven dollars and fifty cents per capita.
Yeah. And if you take the, apparently there's, if there's the five that don't need the in-kind, we'd have twenty K to spread around as the way it seems to me.
Or place that in-kind back into their requested funding. That would bring them up to, to closer to their requested funding, such as, uh, In the Streets. That would bring them up to eleven thousand of their fifteen thousand dollar ask.
So, I mean, it could go either way because we, we need to decide, because initially it was we're gonna give everybody the same thing that they got last year. That was the initial discussion was, was because we don't, we didn't put a plan in place. We failed to put a plan in place from last year. So, the initial discussion was we're gonna divvy out what we gave before because we're trying to stay at a certain number, which was set by the committee last year of one twenty-two. So, if we're now gonna give everybody their ask, we're gonna be well outside of that amount, um, by putting that four thousand that they didn't ask for back into, um, their initial ask.
So, for example, um, and just to give an apples-to-apples comparison, the Emergency Food Pantry asked for thirty-three, six, eighty-five. That's on Mayor Nelson's sheet. The difference is twenty-nine, six, eighty-five in cash and four thousand in-kind. But it brings them to their initial ask of thirty-three, six, eighty-five minus the convention center use. So, Mayor, is it correct that you just removed the in-kind request and reduced their cash amount?
Just a, just a straight line subtraction from that.
And I, that's what I'm saying. I spoke, and they, I believe they understand that, but that's not what they prefer. I spoke to at least four different groups today and they prefer to get their ask and then the in-kind as an in-kind. Because of the need.
I think we all recognize the need. I, and, and I'm probably looking at this in a more holistic approach of, of the impact upon the, upon the city as opposed to individual programs. There's cost incurred. We're, we're providing some stipend to, to these well-deserving groups. And I was just trying to ascertain if there was a better way for us to come up with a bottom-line number of what we were going to distribute and then distribute that money based upon their ask. Uh, again, top of my paper says draft, so I'm glad we're having the discussion. But I think as we delve into this into next fiscal year, we might have a better opportunity to flesh out some of these questions, some of these concerns that we have and get a better understanding of what the groups are wanting, what the city's cost, uh, what the city's going to incur in costs so that we can have a true picture of our budget going forward. And I think it's, I, I think it's something that would be advantageous to staff if they had, uh, some sort of process or understood what process council was trying to do in the distribution of these community service funds. But I'm, I'm open to, to suggestions.
I totally agree. Yeah. I totally agree and with what you're saying. And I wish this was in place for this year, but it's not. And, um, I think that just by you doing this much, we're on the right, right path to do that. I just think though arbitrarily saying four thousand is not the best way to do it either. And maybe over the course of the next year, we can actually get a breakdown of what these guys actually spent on their events to better come up with an estimate of how the, we would incorporate that in.
So, uh, let me offer the following amounts that get us to the one thirty. And this year perhaps the meat in the middle is that the in-kind is from a, a hot fund adjustment to the convention center as opposed to the group. This is the, 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 sort of the equitable or most equitable way I could've done it to get us to the, to get us to the one, uh, thirty. So, the Bastrop Long-Term Recovery Team, ten thousand dollars. The Family Crisis Center, twelve thousand dollars. Children's Advocacy, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Bastrop Emergency Food Pantry, thirty-three, six, eighty-five. Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center, eight thousand dollars. Bastrop First Responders, eleven, nine oh five. Combined Community Action, ten thousand dollars. Feed the Need, ten thousand dollars. CASA, nine thousand dollars. In the Streets, Hands Up Ministry, twelve thousand dollars. That is one twenty-nine, zero, nine, zero. You have approximately, uh, ten dollars left to spend.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
And that makes the adjustment, I mean, this year truly, because we did tell them to separate their requests because it doesn't make any sense to take from one pot to put into another, especially when that other pot is a little bit, um, healthier. But there is one more item there, not just this one, to address. And, yes.
One twenty-nine, oh, nine, oh, right?
Are all of those cash?
Yes.
So, that's all coming out of the general fund. So, we've got in the budget right now one twenty-two. We're bumping it to one thirty. Okay. Just checking.
And so, mine.
So, therein lies the other half of the conversation. Councilmember Kirkland, um, recommended that we go to the no new revenue tax rate, which, um, with the tax rate that is proposed in the budget is two point one four percent, which leaves about eighty-eight thousand dollars surplus in the budget to do whatever may come up necessary in the budget year. My preference is that it be put into a line item. I, I discussed with the council and I've discussed with folks in the community to be at about a ten ninety-nine fund because I cannot ramp up staff quick enough and it is very expensive to hire staff on with a thirty-five percent overhead. I'd like to put any surplus money back into circulation in the community. So, when we have temporary events, I can pay high schoolers or retired teachers or, uh, retirees in the community fifteen to twenty dollars an hour to come help us with events. That, that eighty thousand, because now I've gotta give, I've gotta give eight back to community support, would absolutely help us with our community events. So, for example, with the downtown events where we have to have police, for example, there's been certain statute changes where we can have retired military in place of some of our police. We can do that on a ten ninety-nine basis. And/or the parks events where, you know, I can't necessarily have a fireman or a policeman there. I talked to, um, PD and Fire today about getting a mascot costume when I cannot have fire there because we have an active fire event, but we promised that there would be fire represented as part of this event. We used to have mascots in my old community. The mascot is a volunteer who is, you know, paid a little bit of something to be able to hand out the same crayons and, and give, you know, the illusion that we are well-represented by fire. Our teams are very small. We need to be able to supplement where we can supplement. And to me, there's no better way than putting some of that money back into circulation in the community. My personal opinion. Councilmember Kirkland's no new revenue rate would only leave seventy-seven hundred dollars in the budget, of which you would still be short to take the community funding to one thirty. I'll add that the proposed rate is, uh, the same as last year's rate. There's no increase. The increase is coming from the valuations themselves.
So, the rate that you're, the rate that we used last year would leave us eighty-eight thousand in the reserve?
It's, it's not.
It's.
It's two and a half. Yeah. It's, it's not quite. From a, from a dollar-for-dollar figure, Tracy, not a percentage. It was five zero one four and it is?
Well, um, it was fifty-one twenty-eight last year.
Fifteen.
Fifty-one.
So, Madam City Manager, what you're suggesting or what you're presenting is that no new revenue would mean that we would derive no benefit from the new development and the new taxation?
Essentially, yes. That's exactly what that means. And obviously, we have, um, we have increases throughout the organization, both, both from a cost of doing business, just inflation, et cetera. We did, um, the budgets are, the budgets are minimal, right? We never try to overinflate any budget. So, that, that is my recommendation. Plus, the ceiling that this, that the legislature puts us under, right? We can't, if there is a year that I have to come up, I'm limited to three and a half percent of that year. So, it is a very, very small increment.
Well, we are even suggesting that, that our tax rate be at a lower rate this year than it was for last year.
I believe that is the total, even though it's.
It will be lower.
The rate is lower.
People will gain.
Correct. And that, that was Councilmember Lee's question. What, what was exactly last year's rate and what is this year's rate proposed in the budget?
Twenty-one was last year.
Point five zero two one was last year's.
Five one two eight.
Oh, five one two eight.
It's likely less than. And it's less than a fifty-one, fifty-one adopted.
Mm-hmm.
So, what you adopted.
So what you adopted is the, is the ceiling. Obviously, I'm not telling you to go to the ceiling, but there is new development in the area, and yes, there is a benefit to that. However, again, it, it gets more expensive to do business every year, it's just the sheer nature of the cost of everything. So while I'm, while I'm sensitive, we did try to keep everything super, super stable. I want to tell you, it's a little bit over 5, .50. So last year was .5128, and I think this one is .5014, if I, if I'm remembering my math correctly.
Councilmember Crouch, you have something you wanted to add to the discussion?
Well, I just, I wanted to clarify the 1099 fund, or a 1099 fund. So I, I know that's come up before, and is it, is it something we can add a line item in this budget we're talking about for 1099 fund, and put some funds into that so that we can pull, add it out of that now?
Yes, that would be my recommendation with the, with the surplus of the 80, I think it's 80, is 89680, maybe, is my number. It was, there you go. It was 83, and you just used 8.
So 75.
Because that, that would help with all, all of these, all of these things, really, because you can pull people and hire people and spend that money.
It would help throughout, yes. And, and if the council would like, I would appreciate $25,000 in that account.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to do that, and I, I think we're, the committee last year was just two people, right? For, that divvied up this-
It was, I was also against.
Yeah. So I, I think going forward, we need to have a plan for this, and we kind of have a plan for it. I mean, we're, we asked, requested for people to bring it in, and what they were giving before. I think if we have a per-person dollar amount for the fund, that that's, that's a good idea. And then we do what we're doing right, right now, as far as figuring out what it is. It's, it's an impossible task, because you're trying to elevate one nonprofit over another nonprofit, and, and you're, you're going to lose, somebody's going to lose on that every time you do that. So the way we're doing it's not a horrible way to do it, it's not the best way to do it. I don't know what the best way to do it is. City Manager, do you have something similar than one of your other cities?
Can I just clarify the rate? Sure, please clarify the rate.
So I did find my rate on the proposed budget presentation. So the budget is built on a 4994, which is a 1.6% over the no-new revenue rate.
And how much was last year's? .5128? And so that, that's our split the baby. That's our not-take-it-all, because we know we have some extra value. But, you know, obviously, again, there's, there's always something that'll come up.
Yeah. And I didn't write down, because I was, I didn't know what sheet you're reading off of as far as the order of the organizations, when you were giving us revised numbers a while ago, but if we're still close, very close, within $100 or so-
Yes.
-to being the $130,000, and I think that's probably where we ought to land at.
And then to your point, Sylvia, on the word document that I sent, you'll see on the last page, it says final box and questions, and the, all of those go to his point of considerations for building this out for next year. So part of that is figuring out what the per-person amount would be, the, who would get comped, what groups would automatically get comped, and who does the discount workshop to make changes to the application, standards for features, as, you know, as each year goes on, costs are going to go up, and they're going to, they're going to ask for more, and how do we determine how we're going to change that number? And there's, there's also been a lot of discussion, or some discussion, about maybe incorporating some of the, how can we incorporate some of the groups into a line item budget under a different fund? The main primary ones, or what we consider to be the primary ones, like the Long-Term Recovery, the Family Crisis Center, putting them under a budget. That way, they're not having to come back every year, it's a line item budget, and then the others would have a pool.
Yeah, I, I think they should have to come every year. They should have to come and explain what they need, they should have to come and explain what their dollar amount is, just like they're, they're doing now. That process should be formal, and it is, and that, that part of it's, in my opinion, is good, and it gives some accountability, and they give us a report, they come up and speak in front of the whole city if they're watching the, the meeting. So that, that part's good, the dollar amount part's good. I think the per-person is a very good idea, and, and it's just going to be an ongoing problem, because there's a lot of deserving people. There's three people that, you know, aren't, or three groups that aren't getting anything this time. So there's always going to be winners and losers in it, and at the end of the day, though, the community benefits from all of it, and, and people in need are, are getting things that they need. So with the last, I'm, I'm okay with the last numbers that you read.
So the, would you like me to call it up on the board, so Colin can, can update the spreadsheet? Yes, okay. 10,000? Yes, so that's the correct number. Next one is 12,000. Next one is 12,500. Next one is 33685. Yes. Next one is 8,000. Next one, 11905. Next one is 10,000. Next one is 10,000. Next one is 9,000. Next one is 12,000. And that's your 129090.
I don't have my glasses on. Did you change my population?
11,300.
You changed that formula?
No, I didn't. Colin has a, Colin has a different. No, there's no, yeah. My, my formula comes out to 129090 divided by 11300, it comes out to $10.76 a person.
Yeah, I like that. I'm all talked out.
And I like, and, and the intent was at least to get us started on something this year, for us to flesh out more next year, and give us something to work on for subsequent years. I appreciate the, you pulling the numbers so, together so quickly on there. Councilmember Crouch, your lights on still? The city manager's laid out some new numbers for us relative to community support funding. I think it's brought us up real close to the request. I think we're maybe ready for a motion on, on the community support funding.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, looking for a second. Second, I have a second. Councilmember Plunkett, any further discussion?
Just a question, please.
We have a question.
On the motion to approve, just for clarity, we are approving the new system that Sylvia just read out, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, that we're not with the old system. It's with the amended-
Yes.
...version that Sylvia provided.
129090.
The amount, there is no system, we're approving the amount, right?
Well, but she had a system of how she did it, so that's what I'm saying.
So everybody understands what we're, Councilmember Crouch?
I'm not clear with what.
129090.
Say that again?
129090.
So just a dollar amount?
Yes.
It's not a system, it's just a dollar amount that we're approving this year for the nonprofits? Okay.
Tracy just wants a number.
Okay.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you call the robe.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you all very, very much for that robust discussion. Madam City Manager, relative to the tax rate, no actions would be taken tonight, in your mind, or?
No, I, I would like action, because we have a finance director who is on her last days, and they have a budget book to put together.
Okay.
So the proposed tax rate is .4994 is what was built into the budget book, which is less than the voter-required rate, but 1.6% more than the no-new revenue rate.
And it's also less than what our rate was-
And it is less than last year's rate of .5128.
Well, the city manager's laid out a, a tax rate of .4994, which, as we pointed out, is less than last year, and it's less than the voter-approved rate. I'm looking for a motion.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly.
Okay, if we were to, I'm, I'm trying to, I've been trying to work these numbers in my head, and I keep using different rates and getting different things. If, for the average house, what would the-
We have that in your budget.
Dollar increase.
We have that in your budget book. She built that on the .4994.
Right, on page 18 is what I assume?
Yes.
That's what I've been working, so. So what you've got here, okay, was it a 4994? I thought it was at 4956. Just adding up the O and M and the INS from-
So just to clarify, when we presented the budget book, we did not have the certified values. So in order to keep the revenue that we put in the budget book, after we got the certified values, some of the values changed, which changed the rate. So what I'm proposing is the 4994 gives me the same values as generates the revenue that is already in the proposed book. So all I did was, based on the certified values, we had to recalculate the tax rate. So the rate changes a little bit, but the revenue stays what it is in the book.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to work out what that means to the average.
The tax burden to the taxpayer is $146.
That's what I have. That's the delta? Oh, yeah, I got it, okay. 146 on 1312 from last year.
Correct.
So that's-
If anything, when we run the final math, it might go down a few dollars, but.
That's 11%.
11.1%?
Yeah.
1312, 1458, let's see.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, okay. That's a pretty decent hike, so.
Yes, 11.1%. And that is generally based on the value. Values went up from 255 to 288.
Which is a 12.8% increase.
Yeah, all right, we're at 12.8 in, in value, but up also 11.1 at that rate in, in the tax amount.
I think we'll have a discussion when you turn our mics on.
Sorry, I thought my mic wasn't on. Motion to approve, the tax rate is written for fiscal year 2023, 2024 at the .4994.
I have a motion laid out by Councilmember Lee, do I have a second? Seeing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Do we have a counter-proposal?
Yeah, I understand we do have to have a, sorry, I wasn't recognized.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I realize we do have to have a budget, and... So, yeah, I mean, if we, if we reduce that to a 10% increase, where does that put us? I don't know.
Just beyond my math skills.
It's beyond mine, too, I'm copying it into a spreadsheet. Tracy, do you have that portion of the budget in an Excel sheet? I'm trying to copy it over, and it's coming over as text.
Whatever, so we're just wondering, so you're saying if- The 4994 is an 11-1? You want it to be 10 instead of the 11-1?
I was just wanting to see what that looked like.
Okay.
What, what's your, yeah, what does that, how does that feed down to the bottom line, or the top line? Up to the top line?
So it's 1443. That would take it to $131 increase. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a major question. I think it's going to take that 7,500 probably to 10% less, and that's something like 68.7. Okay. Take it back to 82, then. So, so, Councilmember Plunkett, so you're looking at 10% increase as opposed to 11.1, and you want to see what the bottom line does on our total budget, or on the-
Well, it's all going to go into the-
Burnout to the homeowner. Homeowner.
Well, I want to see, right, if we reduce the tax increase from 11.1% to 10%, what does that do to the budget?
Okay. Know what it does to the average homeowner.
Right.
Right.
That defines what it does to the average home. Yeah, because if we're talking about going from 11.1 to 11%, then I don't think it really makes much difference to the average homeowner. But, you know, so we might as well get the revenue that we need to, you know, to
And I think it's imperative that we have that revenue.
Not totally sure. Okay, so on page 18, if we were to take the 288, the O and M rate that we would be using at the 4994 is point 3032, and the INS rate would stay the same. That would be 874 for the O and M with the 466. It turns out to be 1440. So it's an increase of, shoot.
1312 minus 1440.
$128.
I have 131, but I'll take your number, too.
So so that's an increase of 9.75%.
Okay, so that is
And that is the rate that would be plugged into the book to finish it out. The 4994.
And so instead of point 3094, you would plug in point 3032?
Yep.
And what does that do to that?
That is our adjusted rate now with, with the certified rule.
So what would that do to the $83,000 surplus? What does that reduce that to?
That, that keeps me whole. That, that is that minute, the revenue we plugged in here.
Oh, with the new certified rules?
It's just that the rates change.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha. You just made her do her math.
The value went up, but the rates went down.
You just made her do her math quicker.
So it's better than we thought?
Yes, so it's point 3032. Yes, with an increase of 128.
The 3094 was our proposed at the time without final valuation.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, so the current ask is for 3032?
Yes.
And that would yield an increase of 128?
128.
For the average? Okay, well, that's a lot more palatable.
Yep.
Which is a 9.75% increase.
Okay. I guess I can live with that. And that keeps you whole?
Yes.
Okay, with your 88K.
It means I don't have to change the revenue. We're just changing some of the facts because we have certified rules now. Yep.
So our proposed rate would then be?
4994.
It's still 4994.
Still 4994, okay. But we've been able to cut it to a 10% increase as opposed to 11.
Well, we did pretty good.
Because of the values.
Yeah, you did good.
Yeah.
So now with this new information, Councilmember Plunkett, unless you have more to add, this new information, and thank you for redoing the numbers, I will entertain a motion to accept a tax rate of point 4994.
I restate my motion to accept a tax rate of point 4994.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
One last item, Mayor.
One last item, Madam City Manager.
Is creating the line item in the budget for 1099 staff of $25,000. 25.
Well, that makes total sense to me, so I move to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Everybody's clear on what we're voting on?
That buys us 1,250 volunteer hours at $20 an hour.
That's outstanding. We have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Madam City Manager, is there anything else that we need to take into consideration?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Counsel, I appreciate the dialogue, I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the questions, and I would appreciate a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Let me back off a little bit real quick. Madam Secretary, do we have any citizen comments scheduled?
No, sir.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn, and we have a second. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.